Thank you.
And good evening and welcome to the April 11th meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. We're glad to have those of you that are with us tonight in the council chambers. We're glad to have those that are watching us at home. At this time, we're going to stand, we have three of our students, Keely Vaughn, a second grader for Mitchell Nielsen, John Pittard's student body president, Zach Jones, a sixth grader, and also student body vice president, Isaiah Bowles, a sixth grader, to lead us in our pledge, followed then by a moment of silence. We want to remember Lisa Van Cleef tonight during our moment of silence as her mother is very ill and Lisa is with her tonight. Let us stand for the pledge.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now our moment of silence. Thank you. And we want to thank our three students who came to be with us tonight to lead us in our pledge, a job well done, and we appreciate it very much. Board members, you have a copy of the agenda in front of you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. King. Do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Ballard. All in favor, say aye. Any opposition, and there is none. Thank you. Communications.
Thank you. Lisa Trail, please.
Good evening, Board. Tonight with Mitchell Nielsen School, I'd like to thank the following community sponsors and alumni for over $2,500 in donations for their sixth grade field trip to land between the lakes, Lee Masonry Products, Fans Air Conditioning and Heating, Young's Drywall Supply, Summit Insulation, Avery Smith Nursery and Landscaping, Haynes Brother Lumber Company, West Fork Building Company, Craig's Tax Service, Bobby Allen State Farm Agent, Percy and Elizabeth Rucker, Richard Odom, Linda and Jerry Leith, and James and Sheila Gardner. So they made the land between the lakes for all of our sixth graders at Mitchell Nielsen possible. Also, congratulations to Julie Parrish, she's an academic coach at Mitchell Nielsen, Sonya Cox, an academic coach at Segal, and Amy Gardner, Reeves Rogers, fifth grade teacher. They've been selected by the State Department of Education to be a summer state standards facilitator trainers. Ms. Parrish and Ms. Cox, along with Misty Dodds, she is, Misty is the assistant principal at Bradley, Gail Boyd, math coach at Bradley, and Cherry Ross, an academic coach at Overall Creek, have also been selected to be summer content specialists by district to district. Congratulations to John Pittard, who earned first place in Borough Book Battle, that was held just last week, and to Discovery School in Kason Lane, who tied for second place. Participating schools included Kason Lane, Discovery, Irma Segal, Hobgood, John Pittard, Northfield, and Reeves Rogers. Special thanks to our chair, Mr. Campbell, and Sherry Arnett, who served as judges for that book battle. Laurie Offit emceed the battle, and of course, the MCS librarians actually pulled it all together to make it a wonderful event. This is the second year, and this is part of the National Libraries Month that they are doing this. Murfreesboro City Schools would like to thank St. Thomas Rutherford for purchasing six new blood pressure machines for the district this year. That's about $22,000. The Coordinated School Health submitted a proposal to fund all school buildings over the next three years. The current machines were purchased in 2007, so they are getting old and we are in need of replacements for those, so thanks to St. Thomas Rutherford for that. Murfreesboro City Schools would also like to thank New Vision Church, New Vision Baptist Church, for their $3,000 donation to the Backpack Food Program. Sorry, speaking faster than my brain's working. Mitchell Nielsen would also like to thank members of the First Baptist Church in Murfreesboro for preparing lunch for the staff on that last early dismissal day, and I think we had several community members who sponsored lunch that day for several of our schools. Mitchell Nielsen would also like to thank Free Birds Food Truck for providing lunch to the faculty and staff at Mitchell Nielsen on Student Led Conference Day. They were also open for the parents, and when the parents purchased, they actually gave back 15% of the sales to the PTO. So Mitchell Nielsen is eating mighty nicely. Murfreesboro City Schools would like to extend our appreciation to the Rutherford County Food Bank for partnering with us to provide supplemental food for our Backpack Food Program. We appreciate them. Murfreesboro City Schools would like to congratulate one of our gifted specialists, Dr. Stacy Burt, for being chosen to present at the National Association for Gifted Children's 63rd Annual Convention that will be held in Charlotte, North Carolina, on November 9th through 12th. Her proposal was selected from more than 850 submissions. It's amazing what we have in our city school district. Congratulations to Mercury Court Preschool for being selected as the Read to Succeed School of the Year. A big thanks to Mercury Court teachers Beth Bassengame and Tanya Clayton for their hard work. Mercury Court will be honored at an appreciation lunch on May 18th at St. Paul's Episcopal Church at 11:30 a.m. I also want to remind you that kindergarten preview days are this week at our schools, and that kindergarten registration will be held May 4th and 5th. We do have some extended times on one of those days, and one of the days is during school hours. Pre-K registration is going on now, and it is being held throughout April, so if you need additional information with that, it's all on our website. So at this point, I want to give it back to Dr. Gilbert to talk about our poetry cafe.
As you know, we have the Jenny's and Rebecca Jones Gifted Academy for our teachers, and last Thursday night, three of our teachers presented their project. Each group of teachers presents a project, and so this happened to be a poetry cafe. It was held at Just Love Coffee, and I'm going to ask the teachers that were involved with that, we have a couple of them here tonight who were involved in that, if you would present your students, I think it would be really interesting for you to hear a couple of the selections that these students came up with as far as poetry. Suzanne, I'll let you, I'll let you present them, please.
My name is Suzanne St. John, and I am literacy coach at Bradley Academy. My colleague, Abby Sanders, teaches fourth grade, and another one of our colleagues, Karen Tyson, works at Discovery School. We collaborated with Karen for Gifted Academy, and we put our poetry project together. So the children from Discovery School came to Bradley, and for several weeks, we worked on different types of poetry. So we would like to present to you all two of our students, Addie Burt, fifth grade Discovery School, and Maria Warwick Allen, sixth grade at Bradley, and they're going to share some of their poems with you all.
This poem is called "Daydream." A girl lost, never to be found, in a dreamland, her own land, a wonderland. Daydreams, her dreams, her lies, her objectives, so far but so close. Her empathy, the weird stares from others, but she lives in her own world, forever she stays, she is a paradox. This one, this one is titled "Paradise." I want to live in paradise, a perfect world with nothing wrong, where everything like poverty and pollution is gone, where I can buy all the clothes I want and have gourmet food, where I can live next to the ocean with everything yet nothing to lose. I want to live in paradise, where I can look around and see magic and magical things, where there are no stereotypical people, just people accepting human beings, where nature is friend, where we don't put forest to an end, where everyone is nice and there are no hearts cold as ice. I want to live in paradise, where we all walk with smiles, where there are flowers for miles and miles, where diseases are gone and nobody dies, where the government doesn't try to cover up things with lies, where the world is beautiful and there are no bee stings, where we can fix problems like global warming, where we can all get along and sing a happy little song. I want to live in paradise. Paradise is a world where everyone gets along, where nothing bad ever goes on, we get along and we smile bright, because that is the world that is right. But here we are, in reality, just to see that paradise is only something that we can dream.
Addie, I'm going to ask you to come up real close to the mic, okay? Thank you.
This poem is called "Understand Why." Understand is a word I know and use, but you don't know why I use it. Why, why I tell you, why do you not understand? Why is a word that I ask you. Why do we ask why? Maybe because we have nothing else to say, you just need to understand why.
And this next one is called "I Just Watch." What are you supposed to do when the world is falling apart, where everyone's hurting physically and at heart? Everything is gloomy and your friends are black and gray, then what do you do? Then what do you say? You don't do anything but watch the world die, because you can't help, you just ask why. I just watched my crush and his family get evicted. I just watched my family die, it's like it's scripted. I just watched as people struggle for money. I just watched my friends say it's fine, but really, they're hurting and striving and crying themselves to sleep. They say it's okay, but all they do is weep. And I know I'm only 12, you're like, what does she know? But I've been through a lot, even though I don't tell people. I just watch, because I don't want people to care. I just watch, so that I stay out of their hair. I only care for others, don't let them care, care about me. I just watch, because once you get used to it, it's easy. That's what I do. I care for you, don't worry about me, because soon enough, you'll see, I just watch.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you, teachers.
Thank you, ladies, very much. Well, that was great.
Girls, that was amazing.
Sixth grade.
Fifth and sixth.
You could've told me 11th and 12th grade, and I'd have believed it.
Can you put them online so we can see them? Read them again? Great. Very good.
And those are your communications.
Thank you, ma'am, very much. That was great. Consent items? Do I have a motion to approve those? Thank you, Ms. Renear. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. All in favor, say aye. Opposition, and there is none. Thank you. All right, action items.
We do have one change that we need to make in the calendar, and so I'm bringing it back for your approval. There is an election day on May the 1st, on Tuesday, May the 1st, and so what we're asking is that we extend the semester, the first semester of school, and that our first day out then would be the Thursday. This does match the calendar of the county, they have also adjusted.
Any question pertaining to the calendar and the change?
I just got to the calendar. Can you very quickly repeat that? I'm sorry.
Yes. What we're going to do, Ms. Renear, is there's a May 1st election, and so we're just, we're waiting another day before we get out at winter break.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
All right, so on that, on May 28th, what?
Nothing. It doesn't change anything. It's still, everything else is exactly the same. The only thing that we're doing is just extending the first semester one extra day to pick up that day in May.
So that's the day after Memorial Day, Tuesday.
It's exactly the calendar you voted on before.
So what happens on May 28th on that Monday?
We have Memorial Day on that Monday.
Thank you. I thought May, but I wasn't sure.
So I guess I'm not reaching other things. So we...
The only thing that we're doing is, instead of being in school on May the 1st, we will not have school, everybody will be out, because that is an election day. So where we were getting out on May the 25th, the last day...
On December, in December.
On December.
Yeah, okay, so we're not changing the end of school day.
Right.
Changing...
When, we're going one extra day before we get out, before winter break.
Yeah.
So it doesn't impact the end of school at all?
I'm sorry, I thought we were going another day in May.
I did, too.
All right, so we're changing, so instead of getting out on Wednesday, no, Wednesday will be the last day before winter break, is that right?
We'll now, we'll now get out on Thursday.
On Thursday?
Right.
Okay.
We get out, you mean, the full day is off?
Thursday.
Right.
Okay, thing.
So Wednesday, December the 20th, is still a half day?
Whatever, whatever the day was that we got out the last, in December, we're now extending, you know what? Yes. That's right. Our Thursday will be, right, will be the half day now. That's right.
Because that's not corrected on here.
Because, right, we'll correct that. That's what I get from Ms. Van Cleef not being here. We were getting out on Wednesday, we're getting out on Thursday. Right? Right. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Barrett?
So is the county taking that?
Right.
May 1st off, okay. That was my question. Will I make a motion? We approve.
All right, thank you, Mr. Barrett. Have a second? Thank you, Ms. Smith. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposition, and there is none. Thank you very much.
Okay, Ralph?
Thank you. Next item on your agenda is the upgrade to the software program for ESP. We did research, and we found out that our current program software was not providing, was not meeting our needs, and so we did research and found that there were other programs out there. We conducted an RFP, we followed the guidelines, and then we recommend the name of the software program to go to is Easy Care. And as you can see, it would cost us about $14,000 per year. This is about $1,000 more than what we're currently paying, but we're going to get more bells and whistles with this program. It's going to be more user-friendly, and it's really going to help the parents' communication with ESP and have access, easier access to the portal to make payments and et cetera. So I'm recommending you to approve this bid proposal and to make a motion.
Mr. Barrett?
Have other systems using this, Easy Care?
Yes. Franklin Special School District, right down the road.
Okay. How long have they been using it?
For about 10 years.
Okay, so they've been pretty happy with it?
Yes.
Okay.
They highly recommend it.
Do we have a motion to approve the recommendation? Thank you, Ms. Renear. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. Any other questions or discussion? Mr. Ballard?
This is budgeted in this fiscal year?
It'll be for next year, July 1st, yes.
And it will be part of the ESP budget?
Yes, ma'am.
This, yeah, this will be part of the ESP budget, right?
Yes, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, good.
All right. Any other questions?
Just one. Did I, I see here it's a three, three-year contract versus the other one is a one-year, but I thought you had said that it was more expensive, but yours, it looks like it's less expensive by year. Am I right?
Our current provider do not, our current provider do not bid on this.
Okay.
This, the other provider was $19,000 a year to bid on it.
Okay.
Any other questions? We have a motion already to approve. And a second? All in favor, say aye. Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you, Mr. Ringstaff.
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes, good evening, Board. The next item on your agenda is the open zone schools. Your Board Policy 6.205 requires that the Board actually vote on the schools that will be open zone, and the reason we would open zone a school or close zone a school is based on enrollment and potential growth in those areas. We've been doing this for years, but your policy now specifically stipulates that you vote on these particular schools. We have made no changes in what it was this past year, but wanted to lay it out for you. Open zone schools will be Black Fox, Kason Lane, Northfield, and Reeves Rogers, which means anyone within the district or within the county can request to go to those schools, and if there's capacity and room in the particular grade levels, then they can go in those schools. The controlled choice schools, Bradley, Hobgood, Mitchell Nielsen, they have the zone, and then they have the ability to attract other students in up to the limits of how much that school can handle, so they've got to be very careful when they, when they let extra students in that they don't overload their own zone. And then the closed zone schools would be Discovery, because it's a test-required school, Irma Segal, Overall Creek, John Pittard, and Scales. And as I said, there is no change in what we've done this past year, so we're just asking for your vote to hold these true as being open and closed zone schools for next year.
Any discussion? We have, Mr. Ballard?
I just want to understand closed zone schools a little better. That closed zone means you can't come from another zone into that zone, right?
Right.
I mean, if you move into that zone, you will be zoned for that school, correct?
That is correct. It means that we would not accept, someone can apply to get in, but someone, we're not taking any new students in those zones unless you actually physically move into that zone.
Understand, thank you.
All right, do we have a vote? I'm sorry, Ms. Smith?
And the open zone, can you explain that one more time?
Open zone schools mean, let's just say somebody wants to go to, say, Hobgood, and Hobgood's at capacity, what we would offer them to say, okay, if you want to go to, go to that school and you live in the county, you can go to one of our open zone schools and apply there if we have room. Basically, what we try to do is go to the controlled choice schools first, and if they are not able to get in there because of capacity issues or class size issues, then we, then they can go to an open zone school and apply for that.
And these are people that live in the county, not city?
We'll, we'll entertain someone who lives in the city if it's for a specific reason like they have family members or daycare issues, and one of your policies in the past has always said that we give the ability for someone, if it's in their best interest as for the family, to try to help them out. We do that, we do look at it.
Thank you.
So if somebody wanted to go to a choice school, they could apply, but if they're full, then they could go to one of the open zone but not the closed zone?
Right.
Right?
Correct. They can apply, and they can ask, what they do is they fill out a form and they ask us if there's room, and then we talk with each school principal and say, do you have room in, say, third grade for a student who wants to come to your school because their, their family situation says it would benefit them to go to your school versus where they live?
All right, now, in all situations, if a child is going from their zone school to another school, it's a responsibility of that parent to provide transportation to and from school?
Yes. If they're not within the transportation zone lines, then they have to provide their own transportation. That is correct. All right.
Other questions? Do we have a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. King. All in favor, say aye. Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you, Mr. Anderson, for that.
At this time, we have reports and information, and I'm going to ask Lisa Trail to come and give a report about the City Schools Foundation.
Hi, this is just a quick report update from the City Schools Foundation. We do have 22 board members now, and today, our new board members actually started their first meeting. We tend to roll off in March and add in April as far as the dates for new board. The new board members are Eric Meriwether, Travis Lampley, Kimberly Robertson, Vicky Eastum, Justin Burris, Stephanie Roach, and Andy Jakes. This year, our chair is Minerva Smith, our vice chair is Brooke LaRoche, our treasurer is Rebecca Upton, and she's being backed by David Scott, and then our secretary is Chris Jackson. So that's the new board members. Once again, we have 22 that are participating as a city foundation, City Schools Foundation trustee. We have two major events that come up every year. Our Back to School Dash is September the 16th, if you want to go ahead and mark your calendars for that. It is a 5K and 10K. It will be held at Overall Creek. That is chaired by Joe Faze and Chris Jackson. The Back to School Dash will actually take the place of the fashion show, so we will not have a fashion show this year. Excellence in Education is now scheduled for January the 26th of 2018. I know that seems like a long way away, but we need to go ahead and plan on that. We will be honoring Max and Mary Moss this year, and it will actually be held at the new Student Union Building at MTSU. The Chair of Excellence in Education this year is Sandra Parks. Last year, the foundation gave $24,000 in parity grants to our schools and over $50,000 in teacher grants. Any questions?
Anybody have a question? Thank you, ma'am. Good report.
Thank you to all those that are joining the foundation board. That's a nice commitment.
Yeah, it is.
Mr. Anderson?
Okay, you have two revenue and expenditure reports, one for last month and one for this most recent month, and if you don't mind, I'll just go to the most recent months since the other one's past history. We are, our net income position is $8,759,976. We're at the 75% mark of the school year when this report was made. Last year at this time, we were $6,402,571, so our cash position is, is better than it was last year at this time. In the revenue side, our property tax collections are up 100 and, almost $159,000 a year to date over last year, and our sales tax collections are up over $654,000 over last year at this time. So those are good, two good numbers. Our overall percentage at this point is 78.5% of our budgeted revenue has been received, which is obviously good since we're at the 75% mark. On the expenditure side, overall, we're at 67.2% of expenditures, which again is, is good since it's a 75% mark, and overall, we are very close to last year. We're a little, little more expenditure on percentage-wise, but because of our revenue, it's, it's more than covered the difference. So if I have any questions on the expense and revenue and finance report? And that goes through the end of March.
All right. Thank you.
Your personnel report is before you. If you'll have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those, preferably if you'll just give me a call. And then Gary, I'm going to let you go into the enrollment.
Okay, the enrollment report, we grew 28 students over last month. In this, this past month, we're up 173 students over last year at the end of the year. Our average attendance percentage was at 95% again. Our pupil teacher ratio in kindergarten through third grade was a 19.34 to 1, and for fourth through sixth grade was a 21.63, for an average district at 20.17 pupil teacher ratio. Our pre-K special ed numbers keep growing a lot, as I mentioned to you the other night. In the last two months, we've grown over 40 kids in pre-K. As you know, every month, as they turn of age, we get them, so they, they keep coming, and we, we are getting quite a few students joining our district as they turn three. And we, we are getting quite a few students, uh, joining our district as they turn three. Any questions about that report?
Ms. Rineer?
I kind of have a little question. If, if a child lives not within our zoned area, lives really in the county, do they still come to us or do they go to the county for preschool?
If, we do not take out-of-city kids in preschool.
Okay. Thanks. I assumed that, but I wanted to be sure.
Ms. Smith?
Do we take out-of-city for special ed? Is that what you said?
Uh, she was asking...
No, she asked the pre-K. So, but do we take out-of-city for special ed?
Um, we have some, yes. We have some within our district that are, in our district for special ed, yes.
That are from the county? Is that...
I'm sorry.
That are from outside the city.
Well, they live in the county, but they're going here for special ed. We have some in our district, yes.
Why?
There seems to be a little question on that.
Well, there...
What'd she say?
It might be, she said it might be some choice students who came in on, with special ed, with IEPs.
Does that answer your question?
It does.
Okay. All right. You were shaking your head saying it does.
No, I was getting multiple responses from different people.
Oh.
Yeah, different conflicting responses, I guess, would be the, what's happening.
Mr. Ballard?
Mr. Anderson, is there anything, any event that has driven the pre-K special ed numbers up? Or is it just, um, growth?
Just when they turn of age, we, uh, there's a, there's a thing called child find, where we're supposed to go out and find the students who are in need of services when they turn three. And we've been very successful at that.
Yes, we have been. Uh, well, my question was regarding, I know we've had some events where we've had refugees and that such that have, have been introduced to the system. So I didn't know whether that was affecting you or our, um, special ed pre-K.
I think we're just seeing, and Mr. Marlin, I may defer with you on this. If I, if you disagree with me, please do. Uh, but I think we're just seeing an increasing incidence of our special needs children. And are we or not? Are we just growing and, and seeing that show?
I think it's a matter of growth.
Okay.
There's any higher incidence of, um, disabilities. I think it's just a matter of growth in our district. And we've spent a lot of younger families moving in. Younger families have babies and, you know, the higher number that we'll get. But as far as, answer your question regarding the refugees, that they would not be identified as having special needs by this point. We've only had them for a short time, and it does take a while to do that. So that has not been a matter that's increased our number of students with disability.
Awesome. Okay, thank you.
And I don't know whether we're really seeing any more increase than any other district is. I know in talking with other superintendents, they're seeing a lot of, uh, young children with special needs.
One thing that does happen is families do talk to other families and when students, when families recognize they have a child with a disability, and that's often difficult and, and hard for them to know. But when they talk to others and that, they're just sort of referring along, and that's, you know, broke, the gas broke, you might say.
Ms. Rineer?
The average attendance is down quite a bit from what we've been. When did this period end? The end of the seventh period?
Uh, this period ended on March 24th.
So you think that was that period where everybody had the flu and other systems were closing?
Um, it's, the period before that, we were at 94%, and, which was the real heavy flu time. And so we're on our way back up now.
Okay. I was thinking it was 96 or 97. Okay.
I was thinking... We were at last year. We just, we, we hit, got hit more with the flu this year.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
That ends the report. Under other business, I placed at your, where you're sitting, your desk or spot or whatever you want to call it. Uh, this is the information that I got, and you may have gotten it as well. Uh, this was just addressed to me pertaining to follow district meetings with TSBA. Uh, the one that we, we are part of is Mitch Cumberland, which is on September the 28th in Houston County. Houston County is about an hour and a half away. Is that correct?
A little more than, a little more than that. It's southeast of Clarksville.
Okay.
That's Telahoma.
It's a hall.
Well, there is, uh, the South Central Meeting is in Telahoma. And I think last year that the county board went to the South Central Meeting. Uh, so we don't have to decide tonight, but I would like for as many of us to attend that as possible to do so. I also made a copy of the agenda, so you can kind of get an idea of that as well. Uh, but check your calendars, and let's see if we can have a, a good group to go to whichever one that did.
The last couple of these have been far away from us. I'd, I'd love for us to try to host one of these if we could, or the county should. I mean, this is, I, I think the last three have been way out.
They have.
Yeah, they, I think we need to get it more towards, back towards us, if we could. Maybe we need to talk to TSBA about it.
I, I don't know how they determine where the meetings will be, really. I'm sure they rotate them around from area to area. I don't know.
I don't, I don't have any idea. I know our superintendent's meetings are in Dixon, Mid-Cumberland.
Could we inform them or ask if it's okay if we go to South Central instead? And then, it'd be nice to have 100%.
I, I don't think they care which one you go to. You can go to any one you want to, but I would like...
For, um, you know, they do some awards and things. They would have to know that we would be going to that one.
Sure, yeah.
Could just up and go.
Yeah.
So we should look, is that the date you prefer then? The 21st, because the other one's on the 28th? Two different dates.
I mean, it's fine with me. I'm just looking to see what...
The 21st is a Thursday, if that makes any difference to anyone.
That would, that would be fine with me, as far as I know.
The 21st would be better for me.
Better? Okay. That's why I brought it to you, just so we could discuss. And Dr. Gilbert, you have thoughts?
Well, what I'm thinking is, I can call TSBA and ask if, if, and I don't know whether they will or not, but if, if you all are getting your boardsmanship pins or whatever, if, I wonder if they'd let... They probably wouldn't, but it's worth a shot to ask them if they just send them on down to Telahoma.
Well, I think they will. If you register and let them know, then if you're, if somebody's going to get an award, they, they'll have it there. I mean, we, I've seen that happen at other district meetings.
Good.
Okay, so everybody pretty well honed in on September 21st?
So if you'll let, let me know, um, if you're going to respond in the next few days at least, that I can, we can take care of that.
I mean, we, we've got plenty of time to decide, but...
It's not like it's tomorrow.
Not like it's tomorrow.
Yeah, it says two weeks prior to the meeting, so we have plenty of time.
We're good.
And also, you don't want to forget the Summer Law Institute in Gatlinburg, which is July the 20th, I think. Is that right?
Yeah.
Uh, those meetings start, there's one on Thursday afternoon at 4:00, which is Summer Law. Then you got all day at, uh, on Friday, and then part of a day on Saturday. I think, if I'm not mistaken, Lisa has already reserved rooms for everybody. So we need, you need to kind of look at your calendar on that and see if you want to attend that. It's a, anybody that has not been, it's a very good event, very worthwhile, but...
Mm-hmm.
It's always one of those things, it's, it's, make plans on. It's a good time to, Wes, you could take your wife to Gatlinburg. All right, anything else to come before this board tonight?
We've had a lot of meetings lately, just in case everybody doesn't know. We met nine hours last week.
For, for budget.
That's what you have to do when you develop a budget.
That's right.
And we have done so. Uh, Mr. Ringstaff, pertaining to budget?
Yes, sir.
Can you give us just a little bit of an update on our proposal for retirement?
The retirement incentive? We've gotten several inquiries. Uh, employees are asking great questions about insurance and taxable income, things like that. So I think, uh, they've got two and a half more weeks. So a few of them are considering it. We have one who have signed a paperwork that, that we did not know about beforehand. So that brings the total to four. Four total, uh, individuals who are going to retire from Mercy Procyus Schools so far.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anything else come before this board tonight? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Have a second?[1794.46]